Hey, man, James.
Good morning and welcome to Today in L.A. My name is Mike Amos. He's Raymond Ledford, my stylist, and of course, he's Rob.
He's my stylist, too. But Raymond, I need to see you. I'm looking at my bangs.
Bill Rice, Jr., as we start a Tuesday on our show. And of course, good to see you, my friend.
Good to see you.
But I would have thought that you were fishing for bream this morning.
No, Tuesday's not a fishing day.
Let me ask you something, Raymond. This is a personal question. In your life, you reckon how many brims you have caught?
Ah.
Would it be me? Would it be a million, you reckon?
I had, ah, I was probably so, but anyway, we ate that many, too. But, ah, they were good. Ah, one fella, he, I reckon he got mad at me about something. But anyway, he says, ah, don't let Raymond Ledford fish your pond. He'll catch ever fish in your pond.
Oh, God.
You know, man's got a fifty-six acre, twenty-five acre, forty acre, Alabertis out there.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You know, you're pretty good.
I know, well, yeah.
You're pretty good if you can catch ever fish in Alabertis, ever bream.
Is he worried about you catching ever bream?
Oh, yeah. He told me, says, said, Raymond catch ever fish in your pond.
Oh, God.
Well, I got ill, you know. I said, you know, that's pretty tough, him saying that about me. Then I thought about it, and I said, David Crockett, Daniel Boone, and Raymond.
Haha.
He done put me up out with the bear.
I know, it would be, it would have been a lot, lot of bream.
So I didn't get, I didn't stay mad at it.
I call them brimses, brimses. But of course, it is a beautiful morning in southeast Alabama. We're on Troy Cable Vision on Facebook, and you can be seen across the nation, Raymond, or and across the world on Facebook this morning. We, ah, you told me that we lost a good one, Ronnie Carroll.
Ronnie Carroll.
Of course, his brother, James Carroll.
James Carroll.
And, ah, you know, it's sad, and was it, was it virus?
There was the virus. He, ah, COVID, but, ah.
Now, you, you've had some pretty tough, tough times yourself. You had to go to Pensacola, did you?
It wasn't too tough. I went down there and just, I reckon the Lord was looking after me. I, I fell in the barber shop and had about a, oh, minute forty-five second pain. I layin' there, you know, and I say, dang, that's the worst pain I ever had in my whole life. That could cause the concussion.
Yeah, that's right.
So that Perry Green helps me up. I was gonna cut his hair.
Yeah.
Five in the evening, and, ah, he helped me up. I walk over and look in the mirror, expecting this eye to be, hit me right back in my ear. Here, I expecting this eye to be, you know, enlarged with a concussion. I said, dang, I don't reckon hurting.
Yeah.
So I cut Perry Green.
You, you've had two shots, two shots since, is that right?
Oh, yeah, I had two shots.
Haha. And of course, if you haven't had your shot, I'm going on three as soon as they lend me. You know, you.
Yeah. I'm gonna take the, ah, it'll be a pretty good while before I can take that.
Really?
Booster, but I'm gonna take it.
Oh, yeah, I tell you why.
We took the Moderna.
Oh, yeah, that's what, that's what I am. I'm, I'm Moderna.
I didn't have a sack of trouble with it. It didn't bother me.
Of course, the show is brought to you by Premier Dodge Chrysler Jeep and Ram Trucks on the bypass in Troy, and Jason Gregory. Ah, Jason was tearing it up until Big Jim, Big Bill Rice, Jr. came around, and Bill Rice, Jr. is the winner, twenty-six and six, ah, in picking these games the past weekend. And, ah, Jason was a close second at twenty-five and seven, and then comes Far Lee. Far Lee was in there at twenty-three and nine. And then, ah, ladies and gentlemen, I told you, I told you, I would, I would tell you who was gonna win, and I was eighteen and fourteen. Eighteen and fourteen, and then Mike.
Well, you get points for being honest on your score.
Then Mike was twenty-three and nine, so, ah, Rice has ta, has taken both first places the last two weeks, so he's looking pretty good. And of course, there's a Kula been thrown in there now, Rice. You, you got a Kula and a Chris one hundred dollar bill on who wins.
Raymond, I used to just pick the local teams, and then, but now we got prizes if we win this picking contest, and I'm just gonna have to pick who I think's gonna really win this football game.
I, I'll tell you this, of course, there were some tough games, but, ah, you know, when Rice was about the only one to pick Arkansas, and how'd you know Arkansas was gonna win?
Ah, I missed that one. I, I had.
They're the real S E C team.
I had, ah, I had two upset wins that nobody else had. I, ah, I had Iowa over Iowa State, and, ah, I had Vandy over.
But, you know, a lot of people had Iowa now, you know.
Iowa State.
You know, and of course, you know, what you did so well was, um, um.
I didn't have Arrington. No, we didn't pick Arrington, I don't think.
Yeah, we did.
Ah, I had Liberty, unfortunately. I, I was pulling hard to lose that pick.
Well, Liberty, and of course, ah, that was a close one right there, but, ah, then of course, North Carolina State, Michigan, Mississippi State was a tough one, and, ah, Stanford and Southern Cal, you picked Stanford, so that was a pretty good pick. Well, no, no, wait a minute, you didn't pick, you picked Southern Cal, excuse me.
Yeah, you know Southern Cal's coach is now, ah.
I know, and they fired him, didn't they?
Yeah, he is now chilling out on his recliner.
I bet, I bet. Well, do you know what his, ah, what they had to pay him extra?
It was more, it was more than ten dollars.
I know it.
It'll be okay.
I, I'm sure that guy left all the way to the bank on that one, 'cause Southern Cal, ah, is a tough place to coach, but, ah.
Did you see where Terry Biden's coaching, in Louisiana?
Oh, yeah. Louisiana, I mean, Louisiana Monroe, and, ah, we play them next week, so.
Oh, yeah.
Terry Biden, get ready, here comes the Trojans, you know, and, ah.
Raymond, were you there when Sheila Jackson's saying, God bless America?
I was.
Didn't you do a good job?
I tell you, she, she is so talented, and, ah, you know, I tell you, it comes from her heart, too. You know, she, she sings from her heart.
I'll tell you that.
And, ah.
You know, what got me was that it was a close game, and it was between the third quarter and the start of the fourth quarter. There was a timeout, and she just walked out on the field and started singing, and all the Liberty players, they weren't listening to, they weren't listening to their coach.
Haha, that's right.
They were all riveted by.
They got fired up, didn't they? That's right, and we shouldn't have played there, 'cause they were fired up.
Yeah.
Raymond Ledford, ladies and gentlemen, Raymond Beauty Salon up here on South Ruddy Street. How long you been doing it, Raymond?
What do you think about him calling it a beauty salon?
Oh, I don't care. Dan Jackson and Glen Wood.
Yeah, I love him.
Ah, Dan called it, ah, he called it Raymond's.
Yeah.
A beauty boutique, or Raymond's Clip Joint. He'd write his check different every time.
Let me ask you this. This is something, a lot of fun to ask. Do you have many people that have actually got a haircut once a week?
Oh, yeah, we used to. Ah, when I started.
Who is that? Telepathy, that was.
Oh, a lot of the businessmen uptown.
Yeah.
But I'll tell you one reason they got it every week. When I started, it was on, ah, got out of school on Wednesday for Christmas. Saturday morning, I went to work in nineteen sixty with Junior Berry.
Nineteen sixty.
You know, up there by my clothes.
Oh, yeah. That's, that's now been fifty-two years, yeah.
But anyway, I go in there, and he stopped, and says, Raymond, yesterday, haircuts were seventy-five cent. for a regular and a dollar for a flat top. Today, dollar twenty-five for a flat top and one dollar for a regular. So, well, that was, they'd come every week.
Uh-huh.
And Mr. Walter Ray Edwards, uh.
Well, what are they today? They haven't gone up a year.
Not much. We, we get ten dollars.
Oh, and Raymond's is much lower than everywhere else.
Oh, yeah.
Haircut has gone up from one dollar to ten dollars. So that's a tenfold increase.
Oh, but about two months, I was there about two months. I told Junior, I said, we have six barbers in there. You know, all, I'm a lot older than me. And Opel was working, he, he had worked, he's working, Junior. And we was all sitting around, didn't have any customers. And I said, Junior, I said, you know why y'all could go up the first day I came, don't you? He says, no, why? I said, you finally got somebody in here that knew what he was doing. Boo, boo, boo. Four of them fired me.
Oh, yeah.
I said, whoa, I take that back.
Yeah. But you cut, you cut a lot of little boys' hairs.
No, maybe, yeah, first.
Would you just drop by?
Oh, yeah.
You just drop by and cut them?
I was cutting at the Babedis some while I watched pale.
Somebody told me you charged a Bedali, so little old boys.
No, you couldn't charge them. They paid us two fifty a piece.
Did they really?
We cut twenty-two.
Oh, God.
Uh.
You made money on them, didn't you?
I went, I went and watched pale, uh, three Saturdays in a row. The first Saturday, two hours, and second Saturday, two hours. The next Saturday, one hour. He, he, he said, here, you cut the rest up.
Talking about the little boys out at the Babedis Children's.
Eight to twelve years old.
Good morning, good morning. You're on Today in L.A., Lower Alabama.
Morning, how are you off?
Where are you calling from, sir?
Uh, looks like, uh, hazy Great Beach, Florida. We, uh, looks like it's gonna be raining. Uh, we got that tropical storm, uh, thing that hit Texas. So we're gonna have some rain coming up our, our way, it looks like.
We got Raymond on our show today, Mike. Raymond.
Raymond, uh, I saw Raymond for a little while at Troy, uh, Liberty game. It was good to see him.
Oh, yeah, he was up there getting, taking autographs, autographs. How many did you get for those autographs? You charged for them.
I didn't charge a thing. I didn't get any. I knew what, I saw a lot of folks that I really wanted to see. You go to that Troy game, and you'll see everybody.
I know it. Of course, everybody knows you.
I tell you what, Dad, I had no clue. Uh, I, I remember reading about Peyton Manning and Eli Manning were gonna be doing, uh, a show during Monday Night Football, you know, commentating on the game and having interviews and talking, talking about the game and Eli's game. I was fascinated with watching that coverage last night. You're talking about two great quarterbacks. Then they had Russell Wilson on, um, during the, uh, the, uh, game between the Ravens and the Raiders last night. You watching that?
Hey, one of the best games I have ever seen. It was a great game. But you, they liked to blow it, though, didn't they?
I know, but I mean, I, I, I was amazed to watch Peyton and Eli talk about the ins and outs of football like that. That was pretty incredible.
Did you know, I didn't, I don't know what you were talking about. I did not see it. I thought I watched every bit of that show.
It was on another channel.
So ESPN's got two, two, two channels now carrying the game. You got the regular, uh, you know, announcers on ESPN. And then on ESPN Two, you have Peyton and Eli.
Well, gosh, I would have loved, I would have loved, I would have loved to have seen that. What channel would that have been on?
ESPN Two, so whatever that is on Troy Cable.
Man, I tell you, I wish I would have watched it, no question about it. But it was a great game last night. And, uh, you know, they, let me tell you, old boy from Auburn, uh, that old boy we hate, that, that, that old boy we hate so much, Mike, he's the best looking kicker in, in football.
The Carson?
Yeah, Carson, the, the great, former great Auburn kicker.
Get it into overtime.
That's right, boy. And, and it didn't seem like it bothered him one bit, you know. Uh, he, he was able to, uh, the other guy, uh, had kicked one sixty-one yards before. But Carson, just like his brother, or, or that Carson family is probably the best, uh, uh, field goal family in the, in the country.
You know where his parents went to school?
Alabama.
Alabama.
That's right.
Both of his children went to Auburn, were great kickers.
So, uh.
We had a, uh, we had a Blue Blood Program father coach yesterday. Clay Hilton is out at USC after getting blown out at home by Stanford. So Southern Cal is still trying to figure it out. Forrest is gonna be their football coach.
Do you think they'll hire somebody from outside? Or do you think they'll, they'll hire one of the assistants or what?
Well, I mean, they're gonna have an interim coach for the rest of the year. But, uh, you know, Clay Hilton, a lot of them don't realize is a Auburn grad. His dad was the, uh, love doctor, Kim Hilton. He used to be the head coach at Houston. So, uh, I would imagine they'll, uh, try to hire as big a name as possible to go to USC.
Let me tell you something, Mike. The more we get toward this game, I'm a little concerned about Alabama. Florida, Florida, you know, the, I, I think, you know, as far as the cold-blooded attitude, I believe they've got it. I don't know if they've got the talent to beat Alabama, but I think they've got the mentality to beat Alabama. Don't you, don't you think so, right? Don't you think Florida's got a shot at them?
Yeah, I think their coach does. He has that mentality.
But the coach can't play. Now, remember this, the coach can't play.
You know, Dan Mullen has never beaten Alabama. He's O and ten.
Yeah.
It's over deep.
Yeah, that's right. Raymond, uh, why, you know, I, uh, tell us how the fishing goes now. Well, this is our fishing report. And, uh, tell us how it looks.
My fishing partner, Jeremiah Kendrick, he's got the new Humminbird Fish Finder. He's looking at the fish. Got a worm about this long with a hook in it. He drops it down in front of the boat and drops it on that fish's head.
Oh, God.
He bumps him on the head and the fish eats. He caught eight. I caught two. I, I wasn't paying any attention to my fish finder. I had a nice one back over me.
Were you in the boat?
Oh, yeah, I watching him catch.
Raymond, you know, if you go over, it's no, it's no saving you, you know. That's, uh, you, you.
Go over the edge?
You can't swim.